All this meeting to order, Tuesday, October 8th, 2024, meeting of the Board of Library Trustees. I'm George, I'll be your host for this evening. Alright, let's start off with the consent agenda from last month. Hopefully everyone had a chance to look through the notes. Have anyone have any changes or discussion required? If not, could I have a motion to accept those?
So moved.
And can I have a second? Second, alright. Can I have a show of hands for all that approved the consent agenda? Aye, it's unanimous, fantastic. Alright, so, we'd like to welcome Liz, who is the CFCE Program Coordinator. She's here to give us some information and tell us about what's going on.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
So I prepared a little script, because I have a tendency to overtalk, so. My name is Liz and I'm the Program Coordinator of the Norwood Coordinated Family and Community Engagement Grant. So the abbreviation is CFCE, and it's a grant that's funded by EEC, the Department of Early Education Care. I have about 15 years of experience in early childhood education and I joined this role in January 2024. So just recently for me. It's exciting prior to this, I have two kids, they're eight and 10. And so this is kind of a big foray into the world of early childhood again, so it's really exciting for me. It combines my passions for community outreach, parent education, teaching, literacy, and early childhood development. If you're unfamiliar with CFCE, it's a network of locally based programs that provide child development services and resources for families with young children. There are over 80 CFCEs in Massachusetts and the CFCE programming serves over 350 towns. So uniquely for Norwood, our CFCE grant is just for Norwood, but in some places it serves like a bunch of cities, so it's a larger grant. So we kind of have a unique, like, our grant is just for the residents of Norwood, which is nice. The network focuses on parent education, family education, literacy, child development. We do a lot of collaboration with the local early education centers. So I've been doing programming with Little Mustangs and the Willet and then the other preschools that are in the area. One of the things that we try to focus our programming on is reaching kids before they enter the school system. So it's a really nice way to expose kids to like a school-like situation and then to get the, like, educate the parents on child development. That way, once they enter school, they've had some, like, experience with socialization and music classes and STEM classes and those kinds of things. In addition to those things, my favorite aspect of the job is I'm a playgroup facilitator. So in Norwood, we host many of these playgroups at the Poirier Village Center. So I don't know, some of you may or may not be familiar. But it's a Little Red Schoolhouse on Roosevelt Ave. And it's named in honor of Carol Poirier, who had been an educator in Norwood. The Housing Authority took the property offline and transformed it into like a preschool classroom. And so we run parent and child playgroups there. We're up to almost every day of the week now. We currently have four, we have four morning groups happening there and I facilitate some of those. I also facilitate a parent and child playgroup over at the hotel in Norwood, the Emergency Assistance Shelter. Just, you know, giving the kids some exposure to English and what school might look like. I've actually excitingly found out that a lot of the kids I'm working with, I was able to get into the Head Start program in Norwood. So it's collaborative, it's, you know, resources and it's, you know, getting to the kids before they go to school is the main thing. So in July, the grant transitioned to the oversight of the library, which was very exciting to me, for me. My mom, I was a preschool teacher then director before this, but my mom said, like, from when I was little, like, escaping into a world of books, library was always like my safe place. So it was a very exciting opportunity for me to be brought in. And then with the support of the town, it, because it's a literacy-based grant initiative, Clayton and I had talked about, it really aligns with the five-year strategic plan, focusing on like early literacy. And then I think, like, most importantly for me, this gives me an opportunity to have like mentorship from like Kate in the Children's Department. I'm not like a lone, you know, soldier working in this remote location. I have opportunities for collaboration and to be a part of like a community. And I appreciate the warm welcome from you and all of the staff. And I'm just happy to be here tonight, so can I answer any questions? Yes.
I've got a friend who has a preschool, pre-preschool kid.
Yeah.
Who's on the spectrum.
Okay, yeah.
So that gives me a heightened awareness of that and I'm wondering if your plans for the program include any components for these kinds of special needs kids?
Yes, definitely. So I'm sure, I know his mother wouldn't mind me mentioning, but I actually, prior to this position, I was a nanny for a little boy. He's in Little Mustangs right now and he's also on the spectrum. When I was nannying for him, I brought him to these playgroups at the group and I realized like one thing that was missing at the Poirier Village Center was kind of a sensory-friendly room. So one of the things, the first things I did was I made one of the rooms, I like invested in all these like sensory-friendly materials. And so we actually accommodate kids with higher need. I also work with the early interventions that are in the area to make sure the kids are getting what they need, so, yeah.
That's great.
Yeah. Told the special place, yeah.
It's a real priority, both for us and for the funding from CFCE, because they really want, this is for everyone and open to the entire community and all the young people in the community. But especially looking at those families that don't have other resources to support early childhood development.
Yes.
So it's really, it helps us serve a really unique and important role. And I think frequently, youth with special needs have a harder time finding resources to address those needs.
Well, also, children of immigrants.
Yep, that's correct. Have a harder time finding access to resources. And so the role we can play as a public institution to support outreach and to support our outreach efforts across all ages, but focusing really in the majority of Liz's time with early childhood development. But also working with the Housing Authority and working with our outreach specialists and adult services. There's a lot of communication and a lot of opportunities that we can really build on this work and provide so much more help to the community.
Yeah.
We're really excited about bringing Liz on board and being able to incorporate this into library services. It's, and it's exciting to us and it's exciting to the state.
Really exciting, yeah. We met with our state liaison and we're actually pioneering this collaboration of a library and a CFCE. That, so we're kind of like, we're gonna present at a library conference about it. So it's exciting and it'll like also be a model for other CFCEs. If, you know, if looking for an opportunity for like local collaboration and more tied together programming as well.
For those that are watching through the camera, who are seeing you for the first time as I am, you've got energy, you've got enthusiasm, you've got experience.
Thank you.
It's like all the things in the package that one would want for a sensitive group like this to get the kind of help they need.
Thank you.
Welcome.
That was such a warm welcome, I appreciate those kind words. And it's really kind of a dream job for me, so I'm happy to have the role, it's exciting.
We're definitely happy to have you and, you know, we were, I was thrilled to hear that that was happening, that you were coming underneath the library.
Me too.
So it seems like such a perfect fit, so. I didn't realize that we're pioneering that though, that's the first time.
First one.
So, Liz, you said that the grant is owned by ECC, is that what you said?
Funded by the Department of Early Education and Care.
Under DESI?
So it's actually, so DESI would be like, like elementary school. So the Department of Early Education and Care is the agency that works with like the five and under. So my target age demographic is, age demographic is birth to six. And the Department of, the Department of Early Education and Care is the kind of oversight for programming that happens in Massachusetts for that age group.
So you're separate from DESI, you're, you're separate, okay.
Yep.
You actually have a number of how many children there are in Norwood?
Yeah, so the grant funding is based off of how many children that are in that age demographic. So say a town like Brockton has like a more sizable grant amount. So your grant is determined by how many kids are registered in the town of Norwood from age birth to six. So that can fluctuate, but actually historically hasn't fluctuated a lot. I looked back like 10 years and I was like, wow, we've pretty much kind of always been where we are-ish, yeah. So, yeah.
So how many children is that?
Oh, I think it's around 497.
That's gonna be 500.
Yeah, it's like 500, yeah. Somewhere around 500, hello Donna, I met you at the, yes, okay, I found Anna, I came in with Darshna. But yeah, so that's around 500 kids that we have registered right now, so.
That's good.
Yeah.
Fantastic. Any other questions, please?
We're also just grateful, there's a, you know, a legacy in Norwood, working with the Norwood Public Schools who were doing this before and is typically administered by school districts. And we certainly value our partnership with the schools and see this as a way to strengthen. And it's certainly not something we're in competition at all. We're very grateful for that legacy and for their sharing and making this possible. Grateful to the Housing Authority and grateful to the town administration for being, you know, really innovative in helping us do this work.
I think I had like mentioned first, like, early child, I'm involved with an organization called the Early Childhood Agenda. So early childhood education is historically underfunded. We're working on it, like, there are a lot of initiatives in place right now. But it really, like, early childhood is, does the best when it's collaborative. So it's school, it's library, it's town, it's state. So that, I think, we talked about, like, this is a great way for the programming to be more sustainable and kind of like, you know, continuing what this Carol Poirier started, which was a lot of like investment in the younger residents of Norwood, so.
Definitely, well, as you pointed out, Clayton, it's, it's a perfect fit because it just, it's being literacy-based, but also, you know, the recognition of getting people started on the right foot, getting into school and then how, you know, family lives and everything else get intertwined. It's too easy to try to compartmentalize that and split things apart and it doesn't work that way. And it's great that we can, you know, have, you know, all these organizations working together with the same goal, so.
Yeah, yeah, great, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, and the only last thing was just, I was just thinking about it. I also, like, where we're getting eyes on these kids, I've also been trained to like do a developmental screening, the Ages and Stages questionnaire. So I, I work with the parents in doing the screening that are doing my playgroups and sometimes it's great to identify things and get them into early intervention before they go to school. But that's, that's all I have.
So yeah, that's something where anybody can find out about it and take it, but to get the results, they have to meet with somebody who's qualified to deliver and help interpret those results. You have those qualifications and by able being here, you can make, you can meet with people here, you can meet with people over the Poirier Center.
You have a way wider reach at the library, which is really nice.
But it can be really, you know, if you're a parent of a young child who, you know, you have, it's your first child or it's your first time parenting a child, having, you know, every child is unique in their own way. So it's, I think it can really help parents and caregivers know if what they're, what they're experiencing is brand new for them, where does it fall along a bigger spectrum and what kind of support services could be most helpful. So I would certainly encourage more people to take advantage and, and find the relief that that test and support services it can provide, access to can provide.
I agree. Thanks for the warm welcome, everyone. You are not an intimidating group, very welcoming, yeah.
Alright, Clayton, reports?
So reports, the big report, as we've been talking offline, is I'm back from two weeks of vacation. Everything ran very smoothly, we have a great team here. And they all had my number if they needed to reach me while I was gone and my phone did not ring, which is lovely. So it's great to have such support and be able to leave with such confidence that everything ran really smoothly, really nice. That is the reason the packet is much thinner this month. There will be a thick packet coming once I compile everything that was given and was waiting for me when I got back. So you'll have some more information coming about what happened in September. On personnel, I actually am working on an offer for a new page today, so hopefully we'll have some news on that. That was, the interview and references that were checked while I was gone. I think we've talked about all the new personnel that have come on board and I have new, new updates on the contract that we keep talking about. Hopefully we'll see something new on that front soon. Programming, you probably saw the Halloween costumes, that swap is open and is open all month long. It's fun to see what just comes and, you know, there's a lot of neat stuff down there. And a lot of happy families are coming in and realizing potential. So both people enjoyed being able to drop off and get a second life for their costumes and giving, you know, the costumes a chance and giving families an opportunity to participate in the holiday. Where it could have been more challenging without this help, so it's really fun to be able to do that. And then the scavenger hunt, as you saw, if you saw coming up the stairs, there's a bit of decoration in the building for the month, which was really fun. I had not seen that before, I arrived back yesterday. It was really neat to come back and see the spirit that everybody's getting into with the holiday.
I really liked it as you come up the stairs, it says something wicked this way, huh?
Yes, I saw that.
Okay.
We can give Liz a read, I haven't told credit for that decoration, that was fabulous.
I was looking for a mirror.
What did you say?
I said I was looking for a mirror.
That would be the bathroom at the top of the stairs, that's very.
We could have a contest on who can name the major literary, and there are two, where it's something wicked this way comes, appears. Something wicked this way comes, what? It's, it's in a Shakespeare play. Okay, yeah. To Beth, I think. And it's the title of a Ray Bradbury novel. I didn't know what you had said the last part of your sentence. That happens a lot, sorry about that.
I did talk to the folks in procurement on the maintenance and repair item and conversations are still ongoing to try to get a firm to come and do the building study that needs to happen. But we did have a report that conversations are still happening. Hopefully I'll have something more substantive to report soon, knock on wood. And then the Friends of the Library is the last piece.
Oh, yeah.
They had a fabulous book sale.
They did indeed, they made a little over $2,800.
Excellent.
Yeah, and so it just keeps growing and growing, so. And plus, regular, so it's my understanding, membership numbers are up and then just the, well, Casey can probably attest to this, the, the ongoing book sale itself, that is doing better.
Still going, about $300 a month.
Yeah, so, I mean, they're doing very well, they're doing well.
It's a lot of work, I know both doing the book sale and maintaining the, the ongoing book sale.
And they really have to, really have to give them a lot of credit. They really, you know, they took the reins from the, kind of the previous group and just built upon that and really have done a lot of work and really recognized, you know, what the challenge was and took a pen on and, you know, they're, they're seeing the results now. You know, they're looking at every way of optimizing, you know, every interaction and they're, I mean, they must be in that little room downstairs and they're book selling every day. So everyone pretty much checks in and resorts the books and they, they're doing a great job, so. It's gonna be a good year, yeah.
How are the mugs selling?
They are selling very well, I don't know how many are left, I've been, I don't have a card.
We can check later.
They sold pretty good at the book sale.
Yeah, I think that, I think it's time, I think they're, the meeting's tomorrow, so I'm sure that's gonna be part of the discussion because they're looking at additional items to, to sell.
It's a good time for gifts.
Yes, exactly, so, well, that'll be coming up, so I'm sure next month we'll have some exciting news, so.
Can't wait.
Yeah. Alright, correspondence?
I'll have to go and look when I put the packet together, I don't have any new correspondence to share this evening.
You didn't send us a postcard or anything?
I'd be happy to share pictures with you, I didn't say any postcards, but I, if you would like to sit down and look at pictures, I'd be happy to share photos, I've got plenty, yeah.
Alright, onto old business. None of the committees met, subcommittees have met, nothing to meet about. Patrons in the library, please.
There have been lots of patrons in the library, but nothing of note for this body.
Alright, and then open house, we scheduled that.
We had talked about doing the open house and scheduling that for late October. And then I met with Kate and Liz and they begged mercy. I said, "Everything is really busy this fall, are, is there any way we can put this off?" And the look in their eyes, I had no option but to say, "Of course." I do not want to overwhelm you with everything that's happening this fall. So we would like to do that when the weather becomes nice again this spring and shift into that.
Yeah, I think it will also like give us an opportunity, we have some really exciting things to implement into the property that kind of tie the library together with the, I think it'll, you know, be a complete reveal more. As exciting as it is to wanna, like, if any of you ever wanna come by, that's where I'm keeping a lot of my office hours and I'd love to show you the house, but for the larger debut, I think we wait, yeah.
Okay, fantastic.
So we should take the October 27 date off?
We can take that date off the calendar.
Alright, any new business?
I have none.
Well, my favorite question every evening, search warrants.
To the best of my knowledge, there have been no search warrants and no other miscellaneous advisories in the last one.
Well, no news is good news, alright. Would anyone like to make any remarks that we, you know?
I have something.
Oh, fantastic.
Yeah, the Rotary Club put a small, little library in the laundromat.
Okay.
And so they brought a few Spanish books, but they're, you know, it's hard to find them and it's hard to find Portuguese. So I went to the library book sale on Sunday and I got some adult books. And Marguerite looked for some children's books, but they had already sold out. So today, I took the Spanish books and there were two books in Hindu. And I took them over there and they went instantly, instantly. This one Spanish guy says, "Oh, my wife reads all the time and she's Indian." And he took those and he, and the others, and... And so I thought that was like a nice little thing and whenever I talk about that little library, I say, you know, we have a big library.
The world, I actually had a fabulous interaction this yesterday with somebody who was in the library for the first time and was so delighted to find an Arabic language book to borrow because they had, you know, studied Arabic and then that was culturally important to them and insignificant, but didn't have many opportunities to read it recently. And so they were just so delighted to be here and to get a new library card and to borrow that book. It was, it was a really nice interaction, so world language materials are popular in the building too. If people have suggestions for sources, one of the biggest challenges we have is finding good vendors to maintain, to keep building and supporting that collection.
Well, I will say, the Literacy Curriculum Coordinator at Norwood Public Schools invested in a lot of books for the hotel in like Spanish and Portuguese and there isn't as much of a need there. So if you'd like, I can see if she would be willing to donate some to your little library there, because we were gonna put literacy.
That would be great, because that's a take it, and then, you know, just like the other little libraries, sure, that would be swell.
Okay, I'll let you know, yeah, I'm sure she would be happy to.
What if we identified someone from each of the major language descendents to be part of a formal or informal brain trust? That we can talk to them if we want ideas about what is percolating up as of interest in all glossages and such?
If you have suggestions of folks we should talk to, I'm always interested in making those connections. So I don't know if we need to be formal or just encourage building relationships with experts in the community. I'm always looking for people with those connections.
Well, if the experts in the community fill that, that slot, then I wouldn't try to presume to redirect them to something else. But I'm just thinking of some of the people I've encountered who are very active in Norwood and who are Indian. Like the Chair of the Evening Garden Club is of Indian descent and her daughter got some of the awards out of the high school a few years ago. And I imagine that coming up with ones that are French or Spanish would be comparatively easy, but one never knows. The people that come into the laundromat, of course, are doing their laundry there and...
Does that make sense?
Shock. Yes, it's not shocking. And that usually means that they live in an apartment building where there's no laundromat available, you know, no laundry. And so a lot of them don't speak much English or none at all. I have the whole literacy program up on the bulletin board, so they, they call up there, I'll throw to see that. But, so I'm trying to find the children's books so the mothers can actually read to the kids. You know, and I found a great one for this 10-year-old boy, it's magic tricks for kids, right? You know he's gonna love it and it's in Spanish. And so there's things like that, that I just find it so exciting. And we have all these languages, my translator's all checked off. You know, I have Arabic and I have Hindu and I have Creole and I have Kroll, which is one of the African languages. Along with the French, Spanish, Portuguese and so on. There's a lot of people come in there and they, oh, and Ukrainian, when the, when the war first started, we had a whole bunch of people come in. Most of them spoke some English, but even so, you know.
Everybody has to do laundry.
If they speak English, it does not mean that they can read it or that they can write it.
Which makes Haitian Creole particularly challenging, because Google Translate, if you're using your phone, doesn't really verbalize it and so it's really challenging. You would need to have a person with you, because sometimes you're assuming that the person can read and that might not be the case.
This actually does remind me, we have recently joined a statewide effort to provide translation services, which we do just by phone, but we've got a special service so that we can call in anybody who comes to visit the library speaking pretty much any language you can bring, we can dial in and get an interpreter to conduct a real live, you know, conversation with folks around library services. It's very clear with the state partnership that we can only use it for, for library purposes. But there's lots of reasons that we can help you answer questions and we're really excited to add that resource to increase our ability to communicate with the greater community.
Can you use that for the justice, you know?
For access to justice?
Yeah, access to justice.
Certainly, I mean, that's one of the services we provide. And they also provide additional interpretive services through access for justice.
Do you have to know what language they're speaking, because if they don't speak English, it's hard to figure out.
We can help figure that out, yeah, we can navigate that for sure.
Because I have some trouble with that, you know, like, what language are they speaking?
Yeah, that can be tricky. There's one other thing that I wanted to comment on. I am a member, again this year, of the 10 Outstanding Norwood Youth Award Committee and we are currently accepting applications for youth who have a demonstrated commitment to community service in, in Norwood. The deadline is October 15th, so if anybody knows any youth who should be nominated, we have, the nomination form is at the desk downstairs, you can easily do it through the mobile device or on a computer or you can fill out a form. Once a youth is nominated, we ask them to complete a very simple application for consideration for the award. So I would put an appeal, because we're looking to highlight the outstanding youth and there are plenty here. But I'm always trying to make sure we put the feelers out, so we identify the ones who are most deserving.
What's the age group?
Really, we're looking at people in, it's a high school.
10th through 12th.
So 10th to 12th grade, yeah. Thank you.
That's what it's listed as?
That's what we've posted, yeah.
Alright, good to hear.
We've accelerated the timeline this year. Typically, it's something we've done and then had an award ceremony in the spring, but realized for youth that are applying for college, this could be something that could be beneficial to put on a college application. So we're having, our aim is to have it completed here before the end of the year so it can be included in people that are doing applications that will be due in January.
That's a good move.
Some of the outstanding youth, you know, it's, it's, it's an honor to be able to recognize them. We have some really fabulous youth here. Some of them have family in this room, in fact.
Anything else, anyone? Alright, well, before we adjourn, let's get excited, let's get excited, our own Casey's coming in November.
Yay.
Oh, yeah, that's right, what am I doing?
He's like, wait.
She had a deer in the hair, that light.
I didn't know what you were talking about.
You get a three-day weekend leading into a job. Into, yes.
Yeah, that's good. You can really prepare. Come with that giant looking notes, you know.
Any requests?
I don't know, we'll think about that. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Here we have a second. A second. All in favor of adjourn?
Aye.
Aye, all right, fantastic.
Great.
Thanks everyone.
Nice meeting you.
Yes.
Nice to meet you. Thanks to be here.